I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to Mayor's comments, we will start with our new police chief who is here. I guess as many are here to witness this public square again. And so we'll have Acting City Recorder Duffner give the oath to our new police chief. Right hand, repeat after me.
My name is Dave Sanders.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon?
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Kokil, Coose County?
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Kokil, Coose County.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police chief?
And faithfully discharge the duties of office of police chief?
For the Kokil Police Department to which I have been appointed?
For the Kokil Police Department to which I have been appointed?
According to the law and in the best of my ability?
According to the law and in the best of my ability.
And before we get to Mayor's comments, we have a plaque of appreciation from the Kokil Chamber of Commerce and the Kokil Police Department to ask some of them.
Thank you. Judge Sanders, the Chamber of Commerce would like to thank you, oh Judge Sanders, sorry. Chief Sanders, did I say Chief Sanders? Just a little there was here, right? Chief Sanders, Dave Pierce, and all the other officers and their departments who provided us with such professional and courteous support and present them with this plaque as a token of our appreciation.
Thanks, Beth.
Those who are here for Mr. Sanders, you don't have to sit through the whole meeting against us. You don't need to feel to make us feel all special or anything. If you're here just for him, you can certainly feel free to depart. We don't take the time. Oh, forget that. There's apparently, there's apparently pay.
There's a what?
Uh-oh.
A penalty?
They found the album. I'm sorry, Mrs. Sanders, I didn't mean to remind you. All right. Thank you all. So, Mayor's comments, I'll keep my comments brief. We're still looking for a library board member, so if anybody's interested in serving on the library board, that's one of those positions where you don't have to live, just inside the city limits. If you're interested in the library, care about the library, you know somebody who'd be good, get an application in the library or at City Hall, and we can consider your application. We had a great gay nineties, a safe gay nineties, a quiet gay nineties. I'm sure the chief has things to add on that, but it went very well. I'm sure Kathy Simonetti will talk about that in public comment. But it was great. We had a great turnout, had fun in the parade, got a little bit of sunburnt, but as you can see, a little bit of color wouldn't hurt me. So, it went very, very well. I'm proud of how all of our team worked together with our civic groups, with the Chamber, with the Eagles. Everybody got along. It's great. We didn't have any, we didn't have any conflicts, we didn't have anybody upset, and it all came together. We might break gay nineties for the last few years, but I think this has been an example of where the city's been moving forward and working collaboratively to get things done. And I think our whole city team deserves a round of applause for their efforts. And so I will open council comments with Council Kate Barnes.
Oh, okay. This week is vacation Bible school after Baptist church. The Natronine Church has joined us too, so we're pretty busy. We have almost 150 children there. It was very peaceful. It never over by 12:30. But, um, the fair's coming up, and so Thursday, the 28th of July, will be Kokil Day. You'll be thinking about that. Because you women think about, and men who are bakers think about baking an apple pie because of the contest, you have to have your pie done by, down to the fair by the, must be the 24th. When an apple, I mean, electric range from the Tupper Superstore. And then I attended all the various Memorial Day things. We haven't had a city council meeting in quite a while. And I did invite in that gay nineties parade. Thank you Dennis for the beautiful car. He has his red car and he keeps it in the way, but it's still beautiful. Anyhow, thank you. So, that's all.
All right, Council Shaw.
Well, I'm sorry everybody left. It was so nice to see a full house and see a nice, a handsome policeman over there and stuff, and everybody just left. I'm sorry about your cake. I'm sure all of you did, but that's very nice of you. It's very nice to have a new chief. I've probably just written a lot of things at Rand, not as, never as many as she does, but I do want to say that the Carousel is going to have a garage sale on the 9th of July. And the only thing different this time we're going to do is that we're going to take things on consignment. So if anybody has something that they don't really want, it might be useless, but they would like to sell it, we're going to, we'll take 20%, and so just let us know. If that's something we're going to have, just for the one day on the night. Otherwise, everything is going well. I, you know, I'm involved with the Charm Trail for the Carousel, and it's going to be fun when we go up there because people do come up. They have a trouble finding Jefferson, so that's a real problem for us. But they do come up and they can find the Charms. I'll never have as many as Rand, just got a necklace, oh, I just have a bracelet pole. But it's really helping Kokil, and most of the people that come to the, come up there are from out of town, and they're anxious to see the Carousel and see what we're doing, and then they could have a museum and they could have the Arts Center. So it's a win-win for Kokil, so I think it's a really good thing. So, and plus the people from Kokil too, so it's, it's nice. It benefits Kokil.
All right, Council Phil.
Well, first of all, I want to say, obviously my friend said you haven't had a meeting in quite so long. I want to reassure everybody, and I'm going to explain this. I am still here, I'm still alive. I have received numerous phone calls from where I used to live back in Phoenix, or Phoenix, Oregon. "Dave, are you still alive?" "Yeah, yeah, I'm still upright." A Dave Chappelle was in a head-on motorcycle accident off of Penninger Road in Menford, Oregon. He was from Phoenix. Everybody thought it was me. I have been called by people who I used to work with in the department. "My God, you're still alive?" "Thank God you're still alive." Yes, I am still alive. My insurance got messed up because for somehow, for some reason, they thought that I was deceased. I had some people in Kokil that actually thought that I had passed the line. I want to reassure you all, I'm very much alive and I'm very much upright.
Was I the beneficiary of that?
Yeah.
Did that not take the cake?
That's great. All right, Council President Lee.
Well, you're right, it has been a long time since we've been here. Meantime, I did a, wife and I took on a far 45,000 mile trip around the Midwest in states, 12 different states we've never been to. And after going through Nebraska and Kansas, this has got to be the most beautiful place in the entire world, folks. So, take pictures when you leave because they don't believe it when you tell them where you came from. So, we had a wonderful time.
All right, Council Adrian.
All right. Gay nineties was great, and I want to thank Gary Pobancha for the, well, for the dog park. It was quite clever and it won a purple and white ribbon. And thank Kathy Simonetti for the loan of her big yellow truck and for the loan of her daughter Erica, who drove with courage and grace. The Garden Club is still working on the Garden Tour on July 16th, and we've been putting posters out. And we also are doing the flower boxes on the sidewalk and the clock tower. We're working on that. I made a trip to Texas last month, and this weather is so much better. I don't know what the heat index was, but the humidity was about 99. Well, maybe the temperature was the same. And I went to the League of Oregon Cities meeting in Bandon.
All right, Council Graham.
Yeah, it's, uh, last month I reported that we are waiting to hear from the Oregon State Parks Recreation Trail Program. We did hear from them, unfortunately, it was not possible. So, we're going to wait another year to apply for grant again for the Riverwalk.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let's hear the staff reports and start with Library Director Connor. Anything in addition to your written report?
I have nothing to add to my written report. I'm willing to answer any questions you might have.
All right, Gary Gotten, we'll move on to Fire Chief's report. Chief Bonner, anything in addition to your written report?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'd just like to emphasize, we were able to take eight firefighters last week to Lebanon for the Oregon Volunteer Firecar Association Conference. We were also able to transport our two vintage fire engines, 1941 C- rays and 1923 Brockway. We actually displayed there in Lebanon at the convention center. Lot of pictures with people around them, just really great reviews on those. Our keynote speaker was Chief Bobby Halton. He's a nationally renowned fire chief, publisher editor, Fire Engineering Magazine. And we were able to give him a ride Friday night after the banquet in our, in our 40-months regrows down in Lebanon, and through the little kids in the candy stores. So, it's just totally awesome. And then also Friday night, as in the packet, Eric Bu was one of the finalists for the Oregon Volunteer Firefighter Year for the State of Oregon. Proud to say Eric did receive top honor, uh, Kokil, so.
How many is that?
Very humbly saying, the last 10 years, we've actually received five.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So it's very humbling as a fire chief to, he's surrounded with just such great people who love Kokil and serve in their community, so, so, thank you.
Congratulations.
What's an Eric of Firefighter Year, another year?
Uh, he was five years ago, yes.
And when is the Fireman's Day event again?
Uh, first Saturday in August, August 6th and October 5th.
And how much is it going to cost people?
Uh, $17 for the dinner, there's a car show also with that. If you come as reunions from any class that graduated from Kokil, it's $15.
Oh, it's a great event. You get your money's worth and it goes to a good cause. I can't say anything better. And it's the best company you'll ever have, it's wonderful. Um, all right, if there are no questions for the Fire Chief, we'll move on to Chief Sanders. Chief Sanders.
Nothing more to add really other than want to thank everyone for their support. Half of them up already, but again, thanks. Thanks to the Chamber for this nice plaque. Appreciate that. Glad that gay nineties went well. And the only other thing, we're working on the Riverwalk and putting up signs down there. And I met with Cindy Moody today over at Towny Shops. She's going to come up with the design for signs for us, so I'll hear from her in the next couple of days.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the chief? All right, then we'll go on to Public Force Director Urban. Anything in addition to your written report?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I have nothing to add, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Director Urban? All right. And just a note, I talked to Director Urban right before the meeting. Agenda item 10 is unnecessary, the surplus property agenda items, just cross that off your agendas.
It's not necessary.
No, we won't be attacking on that tonight. All right, Finance Director's report, Mr. Duffner. The highlight of the night.
The one thing I need to mention in every public meeting is the earnings from the Seattle North West Perpetual Care Fund, and the yield on that, um, 2.22% in the duration of 2.85 years. And if you have any other questions on my report, I can answer.
Anything for Mr. Duffner? All right. Okay, let's go to City Manager's report. Anything in addition to the written report?
Not really. Uh, just call your attention to the letter from the League about the legislative priorities for the upcoming year. If you would like to fill out the, check the boxes on the back sheet and get me a copy of it. I can synthesize it and come up with what the aggregate is. If you'd like to have a work session to come together and decide what the top four priorities are for Kokil, that's an option too. But however you'd like to do that, we'll submit that to the League to express Kokil's position on what the top legislative priorities are.
Did we just receive it?
Yes.
Would have been not to put out it before we'd made it.
Yeah, it came the next day. They said it was coming in the mail at the meeting and the next day we got it.
All right, any questions for the City Manager's Report?
I'd like to ask a question.
Mr. Urban.
Uh, the South Coast Development Council, this is our second year that we're on to that. For how long has that been going?
Well, we've been members two full years.
And did we, what, what, last year, what was our benefit from that? Did we get anything from it?
Yes. Uh, I mentioned in my report, we had several, um, business prospects look at the GP site. The South Coast Development Council sent out the profile on the GP site. There were a couple of tours that were planned and scheduled. Each of those fell through for different reasons because we were the best site for one company, but because they didn't have two other sites to come look at, they didn't want to make the trip out here, unfortunately. But the South Coast Development Council does a great deal of marketing and business networking and how helping businesses consider Kokil, when they're not otherwise, take a look at it.
Are you going to be here? You said that 30th you were leaving.
Yes.
That's a carousel making.
Yes, I'm going to have to.
Maybe we could have it two days before.
We can, we can talk about that, yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, then we'll move to what you had to send in, public participation. We've got a public participation sheet right here. So, in order, Suzanne Swan, come on down. You can set the chairs, speak into the microphone, and state your name and address for the audio record. And comments are supposed to be contained to three minutes, so if we could try and be close to that, that would be ideal.
Suzanne Swan, 94576 Shelley Road, Kokil. I'm here to determine with you guys if there's a special use permit fee required. I started the company with my husband called Purple Patriot Productions, and we're going to be working to bring live music, dance to Kokil. And I reserve our Service Park for three summer dates already. Um, the first one's July 16th, and that's what I'm kind of talking to you about today. So, maybe Ben Michaud could help me out because there's no fee to determine for, for anything like this at this point in time. I'm not a nonprofit. I'm a, I'm a legitimate business trying to bring some music. I'm not charging the community its free entrance and admission, free parking. And I brought you guys a flyer. These are all professional bands. This isn't a birthday party. This is something my husband and I have been working on for over a year. And these are, these are really good acts that are coming here, and we're not charging the public a penny to come to the first one. So, I guess I just need to know if, if I can go ahead without any special permit use fee for the day because we will need the whole park. We don't want a conflict of softball players and musicians. That would be good. So, there is no fee at this point in time for any event like this that I'm aware of, and Mr. Michaud didn't know one either when my husband and I met with him sort of, right? I got this little paper, but it wasn't approved or anything, and I don't know how many people will attend. I'm doing really, you know, a blast right now with the media and the news stations and the newspapers and things like that, so I don't really know. I'm hoping it'll be 250 or more, you know, so it'll be worth it. I have major vendors coming, I have the founder of the Lake Saipara Festival. He's going to be doing the, I mean, we're talking, I've got really big guests. So, I don't know, what should?
So Ben, give me a little bit of background here. So, there's no, this is a unique situation where there's no actual, in the fee book, any sort of?
Well, so what we have right now on the books is that to reserve Service Park for exclusive use is a $300 reservation fee so that other groups can't come in for family picnics or baseball games or whatever. And, you know, there, there is a threshold of if there's going to be more than 1,000 people, it'll be $500. If there's less than 1,000, it'll be $300. Uh, the, the request that Miss Swan is making to the Council now that we discussed previously is that she'd like this to be a city co-sponsored event where the fee for reserving the park could be waived if the city was co-sponsoring the event. And on that basis, she'd like to make use of the park without a charge to bring in all these vendors and musicians to provide a concert for the public to enjoy at no charge as a way to stimulate activity and interest and appeal.
Now, the idea being that you pay for addition, for the additional events, though, and get additional events that would be for money instead of a free concert, you would pay the freight?
Well, we hope so. We hope that it grows and we hope that it gets to the place where it can be an annual event for Kokil.
Okay, I thought you were, I thought you were saying you were going to do three other concert dates this summer. I'm not a guy to mix up.
I have three total.
Two? Okay.
July, August, and September. So, a lot that depends upon, depends upon how many people show up and how we do. Uh, so I, I put personal money into this event. And, and I have sponsors that are business owners in the town that have also helped to defray some of the costs. So, I also have business owners that are actually going to come off of First Street and attend the festival hoping to make some money. So I'm working good with the whole community, so.
And do you have liability, insurance, everything?
Yes, I do.
Oh, very good. I'm trying to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. I have all the insurance that's required. I mean, I have to wait until, you know, I know what's going on, but I have to speculate the number of guests we're anticipating. I'm building out a fun zone for our younger guests, kind of like maybe amping up the Halloween deal about 10,000 times.
And, and do, and we have what, two or three Santa cans down there?
Yeah, we would need a lot more than that. We would need it to be set up at least the equivalent, probably, of the garage set.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking.
Is there anything booked for that?
No, I have all three days booked. They've been booked since March.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All day long, from 9:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, this is a, this is a real live music festival.
Suzanne, have you talked about police reserves?
No, I will have event staff, but I will like to talk to the team before I have like 30 days. I've worked with our former chief downtown. I have a safe some during the Halloween party, and we work together for that. So we probably would like to talk with you about that. I probably, if it goes as well as I hope it does, I mean, the bands alone are going to, you know, bring me 150 guests with their families. So let's hope for the best in that regard, but, yeah, I'd like to maybe have that parking lot that we use for the overflooring gay nineties available for parking. I don't know if we could maybe work something out with the GP side, but right now I'm trying to get my budget tightened in because we're four weeks.
So, okay, just, just a quiet now, is there going to be alcohol sales?
No, sir.
Or no alcohol sales?
No, we're going to operate under the law, the rules and regulations of the park except for the hours.
Okay. Is there going to be overnight camping for the event or?
Yeah, there's, there's already camping allowed overnight.
I know that, I was just curious if that's part of the event though.
No, not part of the event, but I did let musicians coming from town and falls know that they can, they want to.
So, instead of, are you looking for a waiver for all three dates or just for the first day?
At least get me through the first one and I'll come and talk with you after that. It might be good for everybody after that. I just, I'm hoping that maybe we could.
Because I'll just speak for myself. My inclination, you know, without hearing from staff, I don't want to hear from staff, obviously, is that if you're willing to pay for the additional dates, I am open to the idea of stimulating this event so you can get some revenue in, that you could eventually pay for this facility and make it a successful business venture. But, um, so I wouldn't be necessarily opposed until I hear from staff, you know, if there's something the county mayor is concerned. But I'm not necessarily opposed to waiving the first one with the idea that you pay for additional at the normal rate. But Ben, what, you had a concern?
Not, not a concern, just I was going to point out that this is a policy decision for the Council, and it's a question of what, what degree does the city want to participate and commit resources to this event? Right now, this is a private event by a private business that is ostensibly for the community, but obviously is seeking to attract people to benefit the vendors and musicians that will be there. And granted, say we participate, waiving the fee is one way. Providing law enforcement or reserves, that's another level. And at this point, we haven't discussed whether that the city would provide sanitation cans or extra dumpsters.
Well, I think that, that all has to be on the event promoter.
That's, yeah, that's what I would.
And if you need private security, you got to do private security.
Those are the considerations to address.
As far as I'm concerned, what we're talking about here is a fee waiver. I may be.
But the fee, but the fee would include all those things, though. That's what we're trying to clarify.
No, as far as I'm concerned, again, until there's a motion on the table, there's nothing to be considered, I guess. But what I'm willing to support is a fee waiver for the park, which means Santa cans are on you and, except for the ones we got there, additional Santa cans would be on the event promoter. And then private security or unless you could work out something with the chief, as far as deputies. Um, but again, is there, I don't know if there's any questions from the Council. I'm doing all the time.
Usually, usually the fee is like what you can say.
Yeah.
The fee has to do with the park itself.
Right.
And anything else is, is on the, is on the promoter side of it.
Okay.
Suzanne, I would have rathered you come before now.
All right, this is pretty right.
Uh, yes, and so before you put out printed materials, before you engaged with the bands or whoever's coming, the vendors, um, this puts the city on the spot because we have to pay for the police. And, um, I'm not sure that Sturdivant Park, if you're expecting as many people as you are, how Sturdivant will fare with all those people, restrooms, et cetera.
Well, I think it would fare just like any other thing that we would do over there. They'd have the barbecue on the river over there, and they'd have, they have a garage sale there every year. It's comparable to something like that. And I have a team working with me, and I met with Mr. Michaud a couple of weeks ago, and I had emails with him. And I spoke, and I made a reservation with the lady at the community building in March. So this isn't just now. I would have to disagree with you. The city and the manager has known about this since March. And I've been working diligently since then to get it done. And, and like I said, some of the vendors are actually business owners here in Kokil, and we're trying to get some economy going here, so.
I guess, you know, I feel like, I'm, I think it's, I'm proud of you for doing this. You've done a lot of work. I kind of feel like Nick, I think that we should have known about it. I mean, I think that maybe Ann should have told us that she was booking the thing, or maybe Ben should have said this is somebody that's going to, going to be coming, you know, instead of right all of a sudden now airing about it.
Well, we're four weeks out, and the only thing I'm asking the city for at this moment would be a waiver fee that, that is $300, I believe, right now, sir? And, and that's all I'm asking for at this point in time. I've covered everything else, every liability you can imagine. My company's got it taken care of.
Okay, so as far as security, if you need security, you're going to look at private or trying to work something out with the chief.
And I'm not looking for trouble.
I know, I know, I know, I know. And you're not selling liquor there, so that's, we're just going to reduce it. And you're going to handle cleanup?
Yeah, we're, yeah, that's why we're here to try to clarify all these things.
Good. Now, this is Marcus, and I really think it's important, and again, let's hear from the rest of the Council, but I think especially with this first one, give me the opportunity to try and generate some revenue so you can actually pay for the, for the following ones.
That would be great. That's right.
Well, hold on one second. I thought I heard Council President Lee some out of deference of his seniority. Did you have something you wanted to add?
It's just, it's, you're, you're, we're shooting from the hip here. There are all these things we don't have any answers to. You know, what kind of cleanup are you going, what kind of cleanup are we going to do? So that we look like you were never there?
It'll look like exactly the way it is when I call.
Who's doing, who's doing the police?
I just said I have event staff.
You have to, you have to have security.
Right, I have a event staff.
What's that mean?
There's not going to be any armed, armed people.
How many people are on your event staff?
I have 13 people that are working with me right now. And there's probably going to be four guys in event staff shirts, but they will not be armed. And there's probably going to be four guys in event staff shirts, but they will not be armed.
No, they'll be doing security.
They'll be walking around and available. I'll be there all day long and my husband will be there. I mean, we've got people that are willing to be there to help manage the crowd.
If you're talking two hundred and fifty people, you only got four people watching what's going on?
Well, but we feel certain, we feel certain it's going to be like in waves. We feel like it's going to be like the garage sale, you know, because it's a very small county and a very small community.
But you're playing music from nine in the morning to ten at night?
Right, right. Yeah, there's going to be different bands.
And you're not having to be no libations there except Coca-Cola, is that right?
Well, there's going to be water and juice and soda, but there will be no alcohol unless, you know, you bring your own. They're under the rules of the park so they can sit on their blanket and their chair under the tree and drink their own beer.
So there could, so there will be booze there?
I will not be selling any, and there will not be...
But there will be booze there, is that what you're probably thinking?
If they bring it themselves, it could. That's what I checked with the, the city manager about. And I'm not selling...
I would be, I would waive the fee, but I will not waive the city's liability. We will take no responsibility.
I have my own liability on the event, sir.
And that's why, that was the first question.
And I would want that in writing, signed by both parties.
I can show you a copy of the policy. I also have all my vendors showing me and providing me with all of their current license requirements as well so that my insurance won't be that high or they can't come in. The all class three kitchens are higher, sir.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, no, I'm just saying this is, it's all kind of a new thing, you know, we're, we're kind of shooting from the hip here. So we have to be careful because the next person who comes in, who wants to do this is going to follow your lead.
Hopefully, I'm going to be it.
Well, you might be and you might not, and there might be two of you. So what I'm saying is, we're setting the precedent. And so we have to be careful how we do that because the next person is going to want the same deal that you're getting.
Well, so you had your hand up?
I'd just like to try to clarify or simplify what this means and why this hasn't been brought up. I mean, normally this would be a, an administrative, someone calls up and reserves a park for an event and they just do it. And no matter how big or small that event is, you know, we may post it on a reader board, but we don't typically apprise the council or I don't even find out about every reservation that gets made. So in this case, I, I've been talking with Suzanne and I understood what she was intending to do. But the next consideration is that this is a first time event. We don't know if anyone's going to show up.
Exactly.
It could be ten people, it could be a hundred people. And so without really having a baseline, it's really hard to prepare and it's really hard to gauge what level of participation would be reasonable. And so with her request, just asking for the fee waiver, this isn't committing the city to cosponsor the event or anything. This is just requesting a fee waiver. Now, the way we have our fee schedule set up...
No, that's not what she asked. You asked for us to participate, did you not?
Well, I understood in previous councils, I mean, sir, that, that if you waive any fees, that they were now, that was now cos sponsorship of an event that you waived the fees for. That's what I understood it to be.
So the, the practice that we changed a couple of years ago in the administrative policy was that we were no longer going to waive fees. There's a for-profit rate or a public rate and a nonprofit rate, which is twenty-five percent of the regular rate. And the, there are certain entities that, like the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, the Eagles Craft Bazaar, where under the gay nineties event, this is a city sponsored event with the Chamber of Commerce and therefore we haven't had the practice of charging those groups under the banner of the bigger event. And so the only times when we waive the fee entirely is when the city is an active participant in the event. If you wanted to waive the fee, this would be kind of a, a new instance of it and you're, certainly within your prerogative to do that.
So do you, is, is the chamber involved in this?
No, no, we're not.
It's my company.
Okay, I, I want to just clarify that.
And to be clear, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not interested in the cosponsorship. I look at this as a fee waiver, that's all I look at it as.
That's, that's exactly how I...
And I would vote against the cosponsor, I'd vote for a motion for a fee waiver. Kevin?
Yeah, it's not so much a question, but generally, I mean, that three hundred dollar fee, that is for additional Santa cans, additional dumpsters, park cleanup. I generally keep a guy on call just in case stuff starts overflowing and we need somebody out there to haul stuff off. So that's what the fee is.
That's what I was told and that's why I said that in my public...
So, I mean...
Well, Ben, it would not, it would obligate the city to participate.
No, because we just said that the additional Santa cans and security were on the event holder.
Still doesn't mean I can have one of my guys already go out there if there's an issue.
Well, I understand that.
What we do, I mean...
Well, no, if there's a blood, well, I mean, if somebody, if somebody gets hurt or attacked, obviously the police department is going to respond.
And that's them, I mean...
So, yeah, we're talking about, yeah, of course there would be an emergency response, I understand that. Obviously, we're not going to have a crew guy down there all day.
No, not like you.
Okay.
We'll have somebody prepared to go out if, if there are issues with the facilities or something.
Of course.
I don't have any issues with, with, with the fee waiver.
So, yeah, what is the council's pleasure, is there a motion or not?
Do we approve this with the city's cosponsor?
No.
No.
Well, I didn't hear, but Ben said that.
All right, is anybody else going to make a motion?
She can make a motion.
Well, I know she can make a motion, but there's no sound.
I, I think, I think the request was simply to, a motion to waive the fee to support this business initiative to bring business to Kokea.
Okay, make a motion that we waive the fee for this first event.
And I'll come before you, Ben.
Are saying that they haven't heard about this, but I saw it in the Sentinel before I talked to Suzanne. So I think there was an article about a month ago with this and I thought, good idea, because I know...
Is that all a motion?
Yes, I have the big one.
Okay, okay, okay. Is there a second, Councilor K. Part?
My second.
Councilor Chappelle seconds discussion on waiving the fee for this one event.
I have a question, man. I want to clarify what the city's, what you said that you was, makes us responsible for, Kevin? If we, if we waive this, what does that mean that we are obligated to do?
If you simply waive the fee without putting anything else on, on the event person, then I'm going to put extra Santa cans down there and an extra dumpster too. That's, that would be what I would do unless you make a motion that says they're responsible for that.
And what about, what, nothing else, just Santa cans?
And I would, like I said, I'm going to, I'm going to inform a couple of my guys and let them know that if, you know, see who's going to be around that weekend so that I can send somebody out there to give a little comp time or overtime if they need to go out and, and empty some cans or take care of a mess or I don't, whatever comes up.
Suzanne, have you made arrangements for sanitation, extra restrooms?
No, I have not at this point in time because when we drove around, they're already done being placed up for the summer. And I was speaking with Mr. Michant and we weren't sure how it was going to go today and how, how it would be because there's confusion about liability. My insurance isn't in lieu of the city insurance, it's in addition to, so. Well, it's the city park, so you guys have your insurance on the city park, but mine covers my event. So that's what I mean. It's, it's, my company has its own insurance, I promise, it's okay.
How much? What level?
It's, what do you mean?
What level? Okay, 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 we can't, I, the council has, Ben, you verified that it's legit and it's got enough, what's the, what's the dollar mark?
Well...
It applies to the dollar, it applies to six months. All right, so do we want to alter, clarify, get more information?
I think what Warren said, we need to have Fran's motion amended specifically state that the event holder is responsible for Santa cans and cleanup and their own security.
I'm sorry, I'm hearing from the back, people can't hear, hear you, the microphone there, please, Dennis. I hear you, but they can't hear you back.
I said that we need to amend Fran's motion that we'll waive the fee, but the event holder is responsible for cleanup, Santa cans, security and their own liability insurance.
All right, now I would look at that as a friendly amendment if the motioner and second are agreed on.
I agree.
Okay, and, and Councilor K. Part agrees? Okay, so that's been confirmed, so that is the new motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
Please repeat the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I move to have the city cosponsor, allow, waive the fee for Rhythm on the River Music Festival. And so that's it?
And then what else did you have?
And your amendment was the sponsor of the event will be responsible for Santa cans, cleanup and their own security and liability insurance.
I think that's in the contract for, when you sign the contract.
Right, we're on a motion. So is that, do you accept that in your motion?
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Governor, that we can get that fixed on the minutes? Oh, well, if you have the consent of the motioner and the motionee, they're good, they're good. And if I, well, you said it was finding use of the, okay. Oh, okay, so we are allowed to vote. Are there any other comments on this before we vote? I want to make sure everybody feels like they've had a chance to be heard. All right, all those in favor of the motion amended, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mrs. Swan, I hope you make lots of money.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
Certainly.
If this should be like some other music festivals and we get thousands of people, you know, it's summertime now. We might get lots of people.
I'm working with the whole business committee.
I know you are. Our hope is we don't have to really discuss where we could even have such Sturdivant. There's what, Dave, sometimes sixteen hundred people for the slam and steak thing. That's all the reunions, the car show and everything, that park is packed. So we really need to...
It'd be nice, very nice.
It'd be great if it turned out to be...
We'll need five Santa cans.
They'll, they'll lumber and go shagging down the road.
All right, all right, back to a public comment. Leah Clark, did you want to?
Just scratch that off, I was just following her and signed by me.
All right, Kathy Semenetti, come on down.
I made it real short.
By the way, that, that, that last debate was more like a late agenda item than an actual public comment. So don't look at that as the precedent for public comment.
This is going to be short, what did you do with Kathy Semenetti?
I heard a wonderful one. Okay, Kathy Semenetti, Sixteenth First Street, Kokea. Mr. Mayor, I would like to take this time to formally thank the city of Kokea for their support and participation in helping us to put on a successful gay nineties. I'd like to expand my thanks to Frank K. Hart and Rotary for the lovely ribbons and the parade, the judging of the parade. You guys did an awesome job. I'd like to thank our business sponsors, Les Schwab, the Hospital, First Community Credit Union, Banner Bay, Thors, Kokea Supply for their gracious and generous donations. Judge Stone and Rotary for the five K run, which was really great. I think they had almost a hundred entries this year. Our esteemed mayor in his, showing us his personality in his zesty sport car and parade. Susan Heaton, thanks for having the dog park participate in the parade. You guys did win Best of Show, it was amazing. Dennis, for driving the grand marshal, Fran, in his car. Did I say that well, sucky mom?
You sort of moved here.
Driving Miss Daisy.
Oh, driving Miss Daisy, oh, okay. I'd like to thank Ben for helping us with that great commercial, Ben and the City for helping us work on that. Kiwanis for their pancake breakfast, the Eagles for their great craft fair. And this year it was really a great craft fair. Linda for the carousel and the great bingo that allowed me to get out of the sun for a couple of hours. Dave and Chappelle Enterprises for knowing that you've got our backs with security out there. I know that takes a, a lot of time on your part and I thank you for that. Nancy Keller for her live chess board and the kids' water games. Our many vendors, our many outdoor vendors that endured the heat for many hours. The Garden Club for their hooper scoopers. All of our many businesses on First Street who gave up their storefronts. And our community for without them, the gay nineties would not exist. Our fire department, EMTs and those volunteers and all the people that participate behind the scenes that we don't see, they all play some role in making the gay nineties successful. I'd like to thank the Sawdust Theater and the Car Club that bring many people to this event year after year and they do put on quite a show. And that concludes, I think, everything. If I've forgotten anybody, thank you very, very much, okay? And that's it.
All right, Curtis Jack. And we all know who you are, but just if you could say your name and address into the audio record.
Curtis Jack, address is nine four oh eight five Nutty Way. I'm here, I had a lot of customers come into my store and they're talking about three different issues that I wanted to bring in front of the council today. The first one is the lack of having the dock accessible down at Sturdivant Park. Nobody can fish on it. And you know, guys, the beautiful Kokeo River is a great asset to our city and yet we are not utilizing it. And I think it's really, really a shame that we have an asset that could bring so much to our town, yet nobody can use it because we're not capitalizing it. We also have a bunch of money that's been set aside through the Ford Abandon for the fish cleaning station. And I believe those funds have been in the budget for two and a half years?
One and a half.
One and a half years?
The good news is we've got two good answers for you on both of those, so.
Yeah, we still have no fish clean. I'm, I'm relating to you the things that customers come to me, is we're kind of a clearinghouse.
No, no, I love it, I love it, please.
They're always telling us stuff.
You're outrageous.
And then the other thing is a gazebo behind the community building. There's money that the Rotary gave, I believe, well over a year ago and we still have no gazebo. These funds have been dedicated and you're not seeing anything happen. People are asking, why not? Why aren't these things being done? Money's there and there's people that want it done. I mean, we have the beautiful Kokeo River, why aren't we capitalizing the heck out of that?
Let me give you a good answer on one thing, is the fish cleaning station. It will be completed before the end of this summer. It was a process of trying to get Oregon Marine Board money to match with, with the port, put in to match the city. Rick O'Shea and I worked with the city and the ports together to come up with our half and we were able to get a match for that late in the year, last year, from the Oregon Marine Board. And so actually in this council packet, we were talking about the solar panels that are going into this new system. But it will be ready by the end of this summer and you can guarantee that that's going to happen. As for the dock, you can address that a little bit more, Kevin, if you could. I mean, we've talked about this and it's an issue with, again, I think, the Marine Board, isn't it?
Yeah, they have, they've taken a look at our dock and they said it has passed its lifespan. And they have been out there already, they've done some survey work and they intend to design one and design it right. Right now we have outside rings that tear away and they're going to put those internal. And they also suggested that we get some money from fishing wildlife so people can actually legally fish off the dock because they're not supposed to right now. Even if they can get to it, they're not supposed to fish off it because it's Marine Board things, just for boat tires.
You can only, they, you can only use that dock to tie boat to.
That's great.
Can't fish on it even though it's in the river.
And, and it's not like everyone adheres to that. I mean, it's just not, but the problem is that we don't have a way to attach the gangplank because that piece is gone and it was swept out to sea.
Well, was it swept out to sea because we didn't pull the ramp in time last fall?
No, no, ramp was already out. So that, that's not it. We thought we had a new pile in and that was going to take care of it, but it didn't. It's just old. And they need to rebuild it and they need to rebuild it in, in a better way. And that's what they're going to come back and do, but it looks like we're going to have a summer without it.
That's a shame.
And it is a shame. Ben, you know, too, but it, I hope it's not, you know, I mean, we'll have to eat in there and see the in-water work that's ready to go, drive piles, and then, you know, but hopefully we'll have the docks already designed and built, we'll just see how fast Marine Board works. But this time, we do intend to get some of the monies from Fish and Wildlife, so half the dock can be used for tying boats, and half the dock can be used for people fish. So, it's coming, it's just one of those things, I can't make it move any faster, especially when they're giving me free stuff. I mean, that they're doing all the engineering work for free, they're not charging us a dime, and then they're gonna, then they're gonna say, okay, here's the plans, here's the dock estimate, then we go, oh, we paid for that?
Yeah.
So, we're gonna ask them for money after that, ask Fish and Wildlife, and also we talk to the Port of Abandon. So there's a lot that goes into it. If I had a simple solution, and I could just hook that gangway up that was safe, so people could get out there, we'd have done it already, but I had guys go out there and look at it, and I had engineers take a peek at it, and they were like, anything you can do here may not be the right thing, and somebody gets hurt, then, you know.
City doesn't want that, or does that agree? May I suggest maybe you put something in the paper, so that all these fishermen that are pretty upset will know that something's going on? They're not saying real nice things about a lot of stuff that's happening because of this, because they're not seeing anything going on. They don't realize how slow the Marine Board is.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly do that, I mean, I try and put it in my, you know, council packet, the council update, but.
Right. And the council packet's enough for press, isn't it?
I believe so.
Yeah.
And, and, and again, you know, it, it's one of those things where, you know, we're, we're hurrying as fast as we can, but we can only go as fast as other people are gonna let us on this one. As far as the fish station, yes, the money's there, but we're just now getting to where it's not like surprise raining on us all the time, and I don't wanna be, have guys up there, you know, installing roof or putting solar stuff together and have it start pouring down rain like it did the other day on us, so I think, you know, we're gonna get that done, and there's a couple of the summer projects, you know, you also talked about the gazebo in the back, well, and this is on me, but the design and gazebo that I picked out, it was so nicely, ten thousand dollars, and they paid for half of it, they won't ship it anywhere within Kansas. Why, I don't know, but they will.
You're gonna pick it up.
And there you go, carry the thing on the trailer the whole way back. So, what I've done is I've reached out to a couple of local contractors, and I've said, hey, what can you do for kind of this estimated amount of money, what can you build for us? So we've got some people looking at that, too.
You're saying they wouldn't ship any further than Kansas because?
Because that's their company policy.
Gosh, if I'm their customer, and I wanna pay for shipping, they shouldn't care where it ships from.
You wouldn't think so, would you? I've never seen anything like that in my life, I can give you their website, and you can ask them.
No, I, I don't doubt it.
I've nev, I've never seen anything like that, and I said, okay, well, let's get this thing shipped out, here we gotta put it together pretty soon, like, tried to say ship to Oregon, and it was like, no, we don't do that, I don't know, they scared the rocks.
Ship it to a place in Kansas and then reship it, there's always ways.
Kevin, are you asking any of the fishermen to help you build it?
To build what?
Fish station, to get it done.
No, no.
I have a neighbor that really wants it bad.
We, we, we've got you guys to do it, we're, we just, we need to do a cut sheet, and we'll probably come to see you for some of those supplies, and, and maybe go buy some of those off bill, see, see what we can get, and, and trust us, we'll be along, we'll be along.
Like I say, people come to the store and they, they vent, and they, they want answers, and they expect us to have them, so.
But we didn't close, yeah, we didn't close the fish station, I mean, it's still open.
But it's not really using it.
Uh, it's usable, it's, 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 it's not high-tech and pretty and nice.
Right.
The one in Florida State is built, but.
The one in Abana.
The one in Abana, but it's, it's still available for use until we, till we get to it, and then it'll be out of commission in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
All right, so you feel confident, so you can spread the good word now?
Thank you for coming. Curtis, thank you for being a buffer.
Well, I try to be, and I try to bring good stuff, too. I mean, if we can get all these things done and start using the river, and, guys, that's our biggest assets we have in this community, and we don't touch it, and it's sad, I don't understand why we don't.
I would do, I would do it a safe way for us to get over there, I really do, there's a side for boats, we, I mean, I can.
A rope when we fun get down, if something fun would get back.
And I'm sure, I'm sure you've shared this with your, with your Abandon Port commissioners, because, I mean, they meet here every, out of their month, they'd love to hear that from some people in Kokil, too, we matter.
Well, I called Gina for the Port of Abandon, and I said, hey, how come we can't get some funds?
What'd she say?
Yes, she got, she's gotta get us some.
How much?
Well, at least five, like I said, over fifty-eight percent of their budget comes from the Kokil area up here.
Do you know how much that is from Kokil? It's about fifty-eight thousand a year.
Yeah, how much is spent in Kokil? She kind of told us.
I know.
Yeah, she said she's gonna give us some funds.
Perfect, wonderful.
And if, if you've got these questions, you don't have to wait, you know, as you call, I mean, I'm always available to help you, so.
There you go.
Fishermen, fishermen are warriors.
Well, thank you, and please can you spread the word? I can say, I'm not gonna plug his business, but I gotta say he does have the best popcorn around there, it's very impressive. All right, that does it for public comment, we will go to the consent calendar, again, the item number eight, is there a motion adopted consent calendar?
With some corrections.
Oh, right.
Because I think these are a matter of record.
Oh, yes.
I don't know who typed them, but in the roll hall, we had three roll halls in my name, I made the motion, but my name's blocked off every one, so that needs to be.
Where, where are they at?
In the roll halls.
Number thirteen.
And twelve.
Oh, I see, I see.
Thirteen and fourteen.
Also, Pat Kegley is C.A.G.L.Y.
Yeah, Kegley, is it C?
Bottom seven, bottom seven. C.A.G.L.Y.
Now, with the corrections, I make the motion that we attach the consent calendar.
All right, is there a motion adopted consent calendar amended?
I, I approve.
Okay, I think Council Heaton meets the funds, so Council Heaton, second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, it has been aducted. All right, ten ninety-nine, police unit contract, are you taking this, or is the police unit taking this, I guess it's you been since you negotiated it?
Sure. Yeah, so, we met for two hours in negotiations, and are swiftly came to an agreement that things under the existing contract were going very well, that there have been no grievances in the last three years with the four-year contract, three years because it was signed into retroactively for the first year, because it was a year overdue, but there are just some cleanup things, what you have before you is a two-year contract that will take us to June thirtieth of twenty eighteen. Previously, the police records clerk position was included in the bargaining agreement, and we mutually decided to not include that position in the bargaining agreement. Previous, the previous incumbent of the position had been given supervisory level proprietary information on a management basis, and so they were exempt from inclusion in the union on that basis, but for practical speaking, it was in our mutual interest to, to do that. We agreed upon salary increases of two percent in each year, which is consistent with what had been agreed upon with Public Works, and what we've already budgeted for, for the rest of the city in this coming fiscal year, that you have in the budget before you tonight. We had a couple of increases in incentives that weren't previously part of the contract, for field training officers, for perform, while performing field training officer duty, there would be a three percent increase to their hours in that capacity. This is not a permanent increase, it goes away when they're no longer doing field training. And two hours of overtime per week for the canine officer, this is to take care of the dog and the extra duties that is, that are associated with that responsibility. For the past couple of years, we've been doing somewhat of a side deal of accommodating the dog without compensating for it, basically dismissing the officer two hours early in their shift to take care of the dog, but as a matter of fair labor standards, it's not a good practice to do, so this puts it in the contract, and it's beyond question, so. We also added a provision for compensation based on intermediate certificate and advancement certificate. Previously, it was two percent for intermediate and four percent for advanced, non cumulative. This time, we made it cumulative, so that they get to add the two percent from intermediate to the four percent for total of a six percent benefit. Now, to get the advanced certification, it requires a bachelor's degree and seven plus years of experience in police work and training, and we wanted to incentivize and reward the effort that it takes to achieve that level of professionalism, and only one or two officers are close to eligible for that incentive. I think this is a, something that we can offer to retain officers for a longer term, because they can build that career share, there's incentive for compensation, and that will have less turnovers as a result. We also added an addition of longevity benefit of one percent after ten years of service, and we only have one person in the entire department that might meet that criteria, and unfortunately, we, there, there isn't a lot of assurance that they're going to be able to continue with the department for other reasons, but we hope that everything goes well, so that they can make a full recovery and return to work.
All right, is there a motion to adopt?
I move to authorize the city managing marshal to sign the labor agreement by and between the city of Kokil and the Kokil Police Officers Association, effective July first of twenty sixteen, and expiring June thirtieth of twenty eighteen.
All right, council meeting, motion caps in short, second, discussion? Hearing none, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, and as I said, the board was keeping agenda item ten, because the board no longer exists, and we're under agenda item eleven, discussion of the fire listen. Now, I put this on the agenda, not to pressure anybody to take any position or anything along those lines, but we voted some, I feel Lauren was absent from that, so he is not responsible for anything in that, just to point out, just to point out to Lauren, because I'm sure he's still questioned about it, though, and they're passionate people on all sides of this. The council initially voted, so after, after getting a lot of input through, which was put into the civil newspaper, and there was some negative, but most overwhelmingly positive from that perspective, and, and we voted, I think it was four to two, to take action on restoring whistle. Since then, some people had had some concerns, and there were some cited state statutes, and even local city ordinance, they were concerned that reinstating that, reinstating that would violate, and so since then, there's been sort of this holding pattern. And so I put this on the agenda tonight, more than anything, so we could hear from staff about which ordinances are the concern, I'd like some specific actual ORSs and ordinance numbers, and I'd like input from legal counsel, even if it doesn't get it to this meeting, I'd like input, so we can just give a definitive answer to the folks, whether, even if the council changes its position, I just, you know, let's let them know one way or the other what the answer is, they have a right to know, whether it's alive or dead. This is something that costs a minimal amount of money, it's not that much money, I think you said it around five hundred dollars, chief, or something like that, the money can be privately raised, but let's figure out what we can do, what the law says we can do, so we can just give a straight answer to the folks. It's amazing, something, when we, when we've got potholes or a major slide over there that's gonna cost a boatload of money, you know, a revolving door at the jail, the things we hear the most about are whistles and fish cleaning stations. I'm pleased that we've got a fish cleaning station coming, I just wanna be able to give the folks an honest answer, one way or the other, on the whistle, and so it's gonna be up to our lawyer staff, and more importantly, the council, decide what we're gonna do there, so. Chief, did you have anything on this that you wanted to share?
Uh, no, not at this time.
All right, Ben, as far as ordinances and the law, what, what, what were the concerns there?
I am trying to pull up really quickly the state statute, I do have a printout of it that I previously shared in a staff report, but I don't have the reference immediately, but the, the concern is this, that any, I, I believe the limited threshold is like a hundred and twenty decibels, anything above that is a violation of state law and or municipal code for a non-public purpose, and so while the fire siren that calls the volunteers out to respond to an emergency is justified for its purpose, for public safety, blowing the whistle for whatever reason doesn't, doesn't serve a public purpose, would be a violation of that state statute, and I will find that reference and refer it to you.
A retired attorney told me this, and this is why, I'm, I'm, if the council is inclined, I'd like it, a legal opinion on this from an attorney, said that even though it was down, it's still technically grandfathered in, because it stayed in the same location, just because you repair something doesn't mean the grandfathering ceases, and so it may be grandfathered in under the technicality, I don't know, but it hasn't changed locations. Also, one other thing that occurred to me is I talked to Mayor Corvallis about this, and I haven't had the chance to talk to Mayor Eugene about this, what happens when they score a touchdown at Reacher Stadium or Watson Stadium? You ever been there for a game?
No.
Windows will shatter when the cannon goes off. I'm pretty sure that is not an emergency function of government.
But it doesn't happen three times a day, but it doesn't happen five days.
This is true, this is true, I'm just saying, though, an ordinance is an ordinance is an ordinance.
You go there to yell, you don't walk downtown scared to yell.
That's right.
By sire. Now, it's, so, that doesn't work.
No, I'm.
If we cannot put the, the whistle in, that adheres to state law, and our ordinance is that we cannot put it in.
Right.
Here it is.
You stated that you thought it was grandfathered in, but that?
I didn't say that, I said it, the former attorney told me that.
I don't matter, that's, so a couple of walls been in a lot longer than that whistle fit on the fire station, it actually moved location, bell, to the fire hall after the bell was turned on. Now, if it's violating state law, because it is a public space, and someone files a suit against the city, we're gonna be liable, because if somebody's walking down that street and that whistle, and that does blow a free live, and they trip and fall, you, that's about a dollar that someone's gonna pay for.
Well, not, not only that, but I mean, we.
Watson Stadium is a private facility, if they wanna make money, I don't care, 'cause I don't believe in the doctor anyway.
As, as I was saying, not only that, but we have, there are, there are businesses across the street from the fire hall, and, I mean, I, I don't, I wouldn't really wanna have my business across the street have that thing up the wall three times a day.
Well, then, it's sounding, we don't even need a legal opinion, I'm glad to call the question right now, do you wanna just end this discussion and say?
I have something that I want to say.
Oh, no, please, don't, please, please, please.
Yeah, my opinion, if it could be lowered, so that it is within legal limits, I would like to think about perhaps having it like once a day, change the whole thing.
If it's, if it's within the law, I don't, you know, yes, go for it.
Because I would like to see that, oh, I hate to have it next and not have it, not bring it up again, if we can bring it within the legal thing, I think it's part of Kokil, and if people don't want it three times a day, I, I'm all for having it like a noon or whatever, and that way everybody don't, it's within the limits of, of the sound, and so, that's just my.
The biggest difference is it's not out on the GB road.
I realize that.
It's downtown, that's the difference.
I agree, my office was right there, the fire whistle goes when there's a fire, and when eight o'clock, noon, and five o'clock, and so it only blows for a minute, so.
My neighbor.
It's just everybody stopped.
My neighbor who had a business downtown, and family still has the business, was enraged when we wanted to get the whistle blown again, she said customers, especially older people, would jump and be scared, and she just was furious that we even considered it. curious if we even considered it.
I know that everything stopped at that corner when the sirens go off.
Did you check into whether or not you could even throttle that horn down?
I've not checked with an engineer, but it's going to take someone's heart and eye to look at that cylinder type whistle. And I, I don't know.
I tried to bring it down, crank it down. That one's tripping up an air block.
It's actually a cylinder shape. It's got grooves on it. So unless you somehow welded up some of those grooves and it came out one little hole or slot, but then with all that pressure coming out too, you're still possibly going to be pretty loud.
They don't throttle down too easy.
Now, that's actually an old time city whistle there.
Does it have to be a state-owned whistle?
How many seconds does it do?
It actually goes for about nine seconds. But what gets everyone excited is that first four seconds burst of the 1,500, 2,000 gallons of air that goes through that. Then it starts trickling down, and it's that sudden hit, hit you if you're close to it.
How many years should we have it going like that?
It actually ran for about, I'd say about 17 years.
At the, but how many years at the fire hall?
It's actually been there about 20 years on top of the fire.
So it's been on top of the fire hall doing the same thing for 20 years?
Well, about 17 years, and there have been...
They've stopped terrific right there at the corner.
How many times do we get sued? How many people dropped dead on that number's carry? How many people have four flags back? I'm just curious. But all these new face narrows I've heard, I have never heard of a single case. But if they really have a heart attack, then we have the EMTs there. That's the good news. I just, it's one of those things where this is such a small thing that I would just assume it's a clarification from my friends on the council on where they want to go, because the people deserve an answer. Even if it's no, let's just give them an answer. I believe in reinstating it back where it was, even if it is potentially questionably in violation of state ordinance, I'd like legal opinion on it. And if there's a way where we can get an amendment in our own city ordinance, well, great, because I think most people in town want it back. I may be wrong. I could be totally wrong. But that's where I'm at. This council voted very narrowly a few months ago to reinstated at its whole process. It seems some of those councils now have different points of view, and that is perfectly fine. I would just like to see what course of action this council would like to take, because the status quo is, in my opinion, silly.
I would make a motion that we just throw away with the whistle altogether.
All right, there's one more.
I'll second that.
All right, that motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on that motion? No discussion at all? All right, well, this would be a vote to terminate the whistle. So all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay, so was that four to two or five to two? I just need, we need clarification for that for the minutes.
Go ahead.
Okay. And opposed?
I'll oppose.
Wait a minute.
Okay, they wanted to get rid of the ordinance.
In the favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, in favor of the motion?
Two.
And then nay? All right. Now, then, knowing that there's no present majority vote to get rid of it altogether, what would be the council's pleasure on some action here?
We still have the stack of letters that Jean Ivy collected where of the 100 and almost 200 letters, there was only about four who did not want the whistle. And so for the people of Kokil who have had that whistle, I make a motion that we continue to have that, blowing it minimally.
That survey you did is not a representative sample of the city. That's just a representative sample of the people who walked in and signed a pre-made law for it. And it doesn't represent all the people in Kokil. See, they use that as an overwhelming maturity. Citizens want this whistle.
Now, to be fair, to be fair, you know, it's not my job to defend the sentiment. Everybody knows, if they read it, I'm not their favorite person in the world, but a lot of people take a ton of their personal stories about their interests on it. They didn't just check yes or no, they did express their interest. Now, you're right, I know how to take a bullet, it's not scientific. But in a small town, it is very impressive to have so many people take that kind of initiative. But I completely respect where you're coming from, Dennis. So Fran has made, now you said minimally, though. Now, what do you mean? Do you want to go back to the way it used to be, or are you talking on some different level? Because it sounds, we, the chief, is saying that looking at this, an engineer would have a very difficult time adjusting the decibels. This was created, when was this whistle created? I can't recall. It wasn't meant to be adjusted, it was created essentially...
No, it was just the whole pipe going up in there, and it just blew, as well as Lauren knows, living across from it.
Have you ever considered removing it, place it somewhere else? Or it's not downtown?
Never.
Yes, sir. I could just say, Kokil Fire Department's not opposed to, if there's a friends of the whistle, something like that, I'd be more happy with my personnel to take everything down.
And...
And, I mean, it'd be up to you guys, I guess. But it doesn't have to be at the fire station. It was there because of that Alwyn Walker senior on the Kokil Rural Fire Board that wanted that history. And so we actually gained a compressor for our station when they put it there. But we're not above to take it down if it needed even something.
Problem is, where can we move it to without putting it on city property? Because there's no way you can put it in a residential or commercial.
Well, that's, and it violates the state law.
Well, again, we've got a lawyer. I'd like to see it. And I want to see what exemptions there are, because I know there are thorough exemptions.
Yeah. Ben, I have a question. On some of the meetings for this earthquake preparedness that you've been going to, are they going to be putting a siren up anywhere in this vicinity?
No. That has not been discussed.
Where they do have them in Cusco and Charleston and all up and down the coast, has there been any problem when they do attach blow?
They don't have three tsunamis a day.
No.
A test would fall under the public safety purpose. So the state statute that I'm reading is statute 467.020, prohibition on emission of noise in excess of prescribed levels, except as provided in ORS 467.131 and 467.133. No person may emit, cause the emission of, or permit the emission of noise in excess of the levels fixed therefore by the Environmental Quality Commission for some two ORS 467.030. Now, they do have some exemptions for public purpose and safety and rules, and I'd be happy to make a copy of these references and citations and share with the council.
Because I don't know what kind of actually facilitation this thing needs to actually operate. You've got to forgive me, I don't operate fire whistles or normal whistles. What does it need to actually function if we were to put it somewhere else? It's got the air, it needs the air canister.
So basically, it has a 2,000-gallon air tank outback, which is fed, which is spilled by an air compressor.
Then it runs off a timer.
And runs off a timer, and then up near the whistle, up on top of our O timer, there's actually a valve as part of that electric, or the timer. So at 10, noon, and five, the timer would open up that electronic valve, 2,000 gallons of air would come through a two-inch pipe up through the whistle itself. After the seven seconds to nine seconds, that valve would close, the air compressor would kick on and start filling back up the 2,000 gallons.
I was wondering if we could put it on maybe in the short term, maybe as you said, maybe there's, because I've talked to Mary Losso a little bit about this at the Kokil Valley Historical Society. Problem is, where do they house it? Where would they house the darn thing at? Because you can't do it instrumentally, because you know, you've got people out there feeding the ducks passively out there, and then you got the whistle goes off. Is it maybe, I mean, well, how big of a shack or anything like that would you need to actually, is this a very primitive structure to board it up out there on the back end of the GP segment where it's at, where, you know, somewhere where it traditionally used to be? They'd need some electricity.
You need electricity, probably a building to be able to do that, probably a 10 by 10, possibly, or a 15 by 10, to be able to hold the tank, the compressor, the piping for that whistle. But the whistle's actually, it's total steel, so it's very, very heavy. We actually have reinforced up on that little two-inch roof up there. So it's a pretty heavy, took three of us to actually just pack that thing up there to get it up.
And you've got to get that whistle up in the air.
I know, that's what my experience is. That's the problem.
Is it automatic? Once you get it working, is it automatic?
If you have it on a timer, or you could actually just do, you could work the valve manually. It's just always been on a timer there until the timer went off.
So would it be installed down at the water treatment plant?
I ain't guessing.
That is to be downtown, because you'd have all the trucker stuff on the island.
Would you have to get a crane to move it?
No, we'd actually just go up there and just use personnel to bring it down and how we put it up.
All right. This has taken up more time than I initially thought it would, and I'm going to give someone a surprise, but the fire whistle, apparently this GP whistle was apparently a very interesting subject. So we know the votes aren't there right now, we totally shut the thing down. Like I said, my gut would be to just essentially initially go forward temporarily, at least going back to the old levels and see what happens, because the public, at least for us, is no overwhelming need for it. Now, there are some people who, I think, we all travel in different circles.
200 people is not overwhelming, first. Second, if you're going to break the law, then you can't do it.
The council already did it.
We don't want to do it anymore.
I know, but I mean, the law's already been broken.
Well, so we don't, we're going to keep doing it?
Well, no, I'm just saying that you...
Does the mayor suggest you break the law?
No, I'm not suggesting that.
What are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting we get a memo from our attorney, which is what I said at the start.
You said to go back and do it just like...
No. If that's frequently a memo from our attorney, as I said at the start of this.
So the lawyer's going to say, go ahead and break the law?
No, the lawyer's going to check those exemptions. I didn't know you went to law school, Lauren, I applaud. But actually, you already have. But I will say, I will say, I will say, God bless you. 200 people writing in, 200 people writing in, thinking this town is pretty overwhelming, I have to say it.
I think we need to bring it out some cocket, you want?
Make you happy, but I haven't got 201 signatures, so they don't want it.
Yes, that would just press the heck out of me. And I mean, this town, and people getting engaged, it's a good thing. But you're right. So my pleasure, I would love to hear from the attorneys. Ben's going to give us the exemptions. Again, I just keep hearing from folks, what are we doing? Even if it's no, they just want to know. And so Curtis has his hand up, but let's see if it's anybody from the council does.
Kokil's supply.
No.
As old as that whistle is, how safe is that cylinder when you're dumping 2,000 gallons of air in nine seconds?
It's actually never been tested.
Yeah, that would be my question. If you were to buy one today, but you can't.
To be bold, so down in my mind, you couldn't buy one today.
If that thing hasn't been used in a long time, and you dump 2,000 gallons of air into it in a nine-second time span, and that thing blows up and you kill people...
Bet you wish you hadn't said yes.
That's a good point, too.
You know, this, have they, I mean, this is just a suggestion.
I don't believe it.
This is just a suggestion. You got a good point. It probably has never been rigorically tested.
Never has, sir.
Have they ever considered going to an electric whistle, which probably is not as loud?
We never did. We just had the system that was given to us, and we just tried to do the best we can to provide a service.
What do your fire, fire whistles are, blow?
What's that for him?
When you, when you have the sirens go off and there's a fire, what are those?
It is electric.
Well, all right.
Not air.
All I can say is to citizens, talk to your city councilors. It seems like we have no action here, there's no motions, and the status quo maintains. I would personally ask the legal council for a memo on the exemptions. We all have the exemptions given to us. And if the city council wishes to act later, they can. I put it on the agenda, I gave them a chance to act. They need more information, I understand that, and I respect that. Some believe it needs to be shut down, and I respect that, too. But there you go. So if there's no further discussion, we will move to agenda item 12, approval of contract for library architect services. And...
This is going to be a lot easier.
Bless you.
We put out for bids for this work on our new library. HGP got the bid. This is just signing the contract so they can start working. And the foundation, that foundation is going to pay for this work, this phase of our construction. That's what they were invented for, created for.
That's nice, too. That makes it really nice, because according to this, in no effect, I'll save a budget.
Exactly.
Good friends at the friends. All right, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the contract with...
All right. Council Graham's made a motion, Council Eaton's seconded, discussion. Of course, these guys have done a lot of great work with the city over the years, good people, local people. I saw the presentation on the library board, they've got very good ideas. So all those in favor, then, if there's no further discussion of approval of the contract for library architect services, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, agenda item 13, subdivision of Lock Rattle, Ben.
All right. Since the last time when I presented this idea to the city council, I was directed to bring more details, and I have done that. I have tried to get a lot more specific in the memo that you see about how the process would be implemented and how we would feel about doing this. Are there any questions or requests for additional information?
Can it be done on Facebook?
Wow, that's interesting.
We could promote it on Facebook.
I was told you could, so that's why I asked you.
You cannot sell, you must sell a raffle ticket in person with a physical ticket. You cannot sell it online, you cannot, the transaction has to happen in person.
Okay, but you can advertise it.
But I can advertise it and notify it.
All right, that's good.
I have another question, too, is that the person that wins, are there any restrictions on that as far as what kind of a house, or what kind of color, or could it be six stories, or anything, if we're going to do this?
Yes, and Mr. Duffin's report, he talked about having some restrictions about the timeframe to build on a lot, and the restrictions that it has to be a stick-built house, not a payload, or something of that sort, and we would set similar criteria and rules.
Okay, so I would like to try and...
On this.